All right, it's 6 o'clock and I'm first going to call the public budget hearing to order and ask if anyone has any comments on the budget. No?
Kat, do we need to announce that we're recording?
Um, yes, we are being recorded, thank you. I was gonna get to the, okay, yeah, but we are being recorded. Thank you, no, it's fine. We are being recorded for everyone. Um, okay, if there's no comments, I can just close that, right?
Yes, I believe they have to vote to close the public.
Okay, can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote or, okay. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Me and is yes. And now I will call our regular meeting to order and it is 6:01 PM and it's still being recorded. All right, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome our visitors. Do any of you want to speak? No, just here? Okay, great. All right, um, now we'll move on to the minutes of January 2nd. And also, for future agenda items, we need to put the amendment of the minutes from November because they aren't on the agenda, so I'm gonna add that to future agenda items.
If we can make an amendment for in attendance, we have a miss spelling with one of the attendees. It should be Julie Robishard, so it's R-O and the R is missing. And I just want to add thank you to Sue because I feel like these minutes were very well done this time. And I think it was because of the snafu, but these are very detailed, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. When you're ready, someone can make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from our January 2nd, 2024 meeting.
Do we need to say amended minutes? Because we're...
Oh, amended minutes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so to follow up about posting the school committee meetings on YouTube?
Yes, John Mahara has confirmed that the network is, our network configuration will not be a problem, and he is going to be discussing it with a representative from Area 58.
Do you think this is something we could get for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, is there a link we can provide, like on the agenda or something where people can watch the meeting, or I'm not really sure how that works?
I believe that's how it will work, that they'll give us a web address to provide with our posting.
Okay.
Does Silver Lake have a YouTube channel already that we can just direct people to that one channel so that it's a consistent link that they go to? And they can go to, usually, there's another tab that says "Live," and they just click on "Live" and can see whatever Silver Lake is currently broadcasting?
Well, I can't say for certain. I don't know what the requirements are for Area 58. And I think we would have to do a Halifax YouTube channel, and then that would be a whole different scenario.
Okay.
So I'm not quite sure, but I can certainly ask.
Okay. I think it would be a great way to archive everything in one place, too.
I don't think that's as big of an issue because our website platform will now allow us to save and archive.
Perfect.
But I just don't know the answer about our own separate distinct YouTube channel.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I don't think we need to vote on it because we voted last time. Okay, so we'll have that up by our next meeting, which will be great. All right, um, now we have the school committee goals that were included in the packet. Do you want me to just read them out loud, or?
Whatever your pleasure is.
I'll just read them out loud, just so everyone knows, you know, because I mean, the audience. So, this is a draft of our school committee goals. One is continuous improvement in academic success of students that is measurable, data-driven, and supports teachers' ability to educate. A, use data provided by the principal to identify opportunities for improvement. B, increase the number of students who achieve proficient MCAS scores. C, seek opportunities to support programs targeting achievement gaps. Two, communicate and collaborate with all stakeholders. A, identify ways to share important information about student achievement, budget, safety, and maintenance projects with the larger school and town community. B, work with all stakeholders to ensure Halifax Elementary is a welcoming environment that promotes equity and inclusion. Three, promote school committee team development and training for members. A, review opportunities to utilize mask programs, supports, training, and workshops. And B, explore online learning opportunities. Anyone have any comments about that, or?
No, thank you, Lori.
Yeah, that's great. Pretty succinct, I feel like.
I just think that 1B is a little bit difficult. Just, we don't want to limit ourselves by just saying to achieve proficient. I would just say to, I mean, I don't know if you're looking for it to have measurable data, then that gets spicy, but increasing the number of students, I don't know, I don't want to limit ourselves there, so I...
Maybe to increase proficiency?
Or maybe just increase overall MCAS scores rather than limiting ourselves by proficient. And, you know, some kids, maybe there's lots of kids making great strides even though they're not proficient yet, so I don't want to just hone in on that, but that's just my opinion.
I don't think you want to be more B a little bit, you know?
Yeah, I think this was part of when we talked about this moving to November, and it might have been, I'm not certain, but it might have been, or part of that discussion, I can't remember. But this came from my notes, which, again, November, I relied on some of Sue's notes. So in my notes, I had put something about increasing proficiency because there was an opportunity there, but yeah, I think we can edit it.
Right. Well, is there anything else? Because we could just adopt them with that amended language?
Sure.
If everyone's okay with that?
So Karen, just to make sure I understand, you wanted to say something like increase or improve MCAS scores?
I think we could even just post standardized testing within, Mr. Bowdre talks a lot about under testing as well, so yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Just increase standardized testing performance of students.
Could we include our goals on the school committee website where our, so they're available to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Would we need to vote to do that? I don't see why not. Should we vote on both of those things, I suppose?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we want to just put the high-level goal, or do you want to quote, and it's like a good chunk of real estate on the page, so do you want to just do 1, 2, 3 and not include all the 1s and 3s?
Probably, yeah. That's true, that's a lot of words. All right.
Sorry, just one other thing. So I think that number one is sort of the same context of a statement as the other two, so 2 and 3 are action statements. So I think that number one needs to be more like an action statement.
So continue to improve?
So, yeah, well, yeah, that would be fine. Like, so we're communicating number 2, we're promoting number 3, but then number 1 is continuous improvement in academics, so it's not something that we're doing. So, continue to improve would be fine. That's the segment that you're voting for, isn't that fine?
Anyone else have, is that fine?
Both.
Okay. Okay, so I'll edit those and send them back to Sue or Karen to include in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you for your work on that.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience.
I can, I'll make a motion to approve the Halifax School Committee goals with the updated language and to post it on the website under our school committee and include the goals on the 1, 2, and 3 on future agendas.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, so now we have, we have some flyers that were included in our packet for the South Shore Children's Chorus, Kingston Youth Lacrosse, and Silver Lake Youth Cheer flyer. And we, our permission is needed to distribute these to the school, so basically, we just need to have a discussion about it, or?
I have a question. So, it's been a while since my kids have been in this building, but I do remember seeing flyers sent home to, like, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and so is this something that all, or, you know, extracurriculars that are not school-affiliated can send out and send home with students? Do you, I don't know.
We get things all the time.
Okay.
It's, I mean, we try and make sure that you guys are all reviewing everything that we have.
Okay.
All right. It's, I don't know, there was another one that Ellen sent down today.
I have it on a, as a future agenda item because we can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, because I know she brought my names above gas.
Ever Source, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, basically, nothing's supposed to be, because that could be considered advertising. And if it's not, like, directly from the school district, right, anything outside the school district would need to have the approval of the school committee.
Right, but we've approved things like that.
We have approved things in the past.
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay, sorry.
It was just to make sure that this wasn't something we were doing.
No, we've approved things in the past.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I think it's good to encourage activities and, you know, especially across the three towns and whatnot.
Yeah.
For new families that might not know about it.
Yeah, younger kids trying to figure out what they're, what is available. So do we have to vote on each flyer individually?
I think we can vote them together. Does that, is there any further discussion? Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the distribution of the flyers for the South Shore Children's Choir and Kingston LaFrosse.
I'll second that.
Oh, wait, and the cheer flyer?
I didn't see that one.
You didn't?
No.
I saw it.
Yeah, there's, it's, I'm like your...
Cheer, S-L-Y-C, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
It's right under their goals. It's the same one they do every year.
So yeah, and Silver Lake Cheer.
And I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. And then, signature warrants?
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Should we just do it with the?
Distracting.
Financial report, or does it matter?
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
I have brought with me tonight 11 warrants totaling $508,586.69 for your signature, and those will be delivered to the town hall tomorrow.
Okay. Great. And then, school committee correspondence reports, I do not have any. New business, we don't have any of them, or unfinished business, can't really, I thought we were taking those off, anyway, because we can't really just open up, you know? Anyway, all right, so as far as future agendas, items, we're gonna add the November minutes for amending to be discussed at the next meeting, and then the flyers for Ever Source that were shared with me today. And then also, I wanted to talk about the QR code that's out with the sign. It's that sign, the 100 Days of School, and talk about advertising at school. Next agenda, next meeting.
I didn't really read the sign because I was kind of getting like, so what is the sign?
100 Days Smarter, I think it says, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great sign, but, yeah, but it's just the QR code that I wanted.
Marketing their business.
Yes. So, we'll add that to the, those are our future agendas. Does anyone else have anything?
I guess a question about that would be, I don't know, was that sign donated, or was that?
We can't really talk about it, so we have to put it on the next agenda. I know, I have questions, too, that, like, yeah, so we'll just put them on the agenda for next...
Say that one for next slide.
Yeah, exactly. So, all right, so we'll move on to subcommittees. For policy, it looks like we have to go over E-C-A-F-G.
It was inadvertently left off of the last rule.
Okay. Do we have to do the first pass, or we just have to?
That was my question, too. Did we get it the first time we went through?
I thought we did, it looked familiar.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen this one a bunch.
So I'll make a motion to waive the second reading of policy, E-C-A-F-G.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Katie?
Aye. Or yes?
Look.
Karen?
Jessica?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes? All right, negotiations, we have?
We need to then approve the proposal.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'll make a motion to approve policy, E-C-A-F-G.
Second.
All right, Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay. And then negotiations, we are going to discuss in our executive session. Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
So they took me, they got Sue. They had another meeting, but I had a conflict with parent conferences, which seems to be a theme for me at the middle school, but on January 4th, I didn't attend that meeting. It was a short meeting, as they stated themselves, and basically, it was just the executive director's report about correspondence involvement, programming updates, and staffing updates. I don't know how much to report out from that. And then I'll try to get the minutes for the last meeting for our next meeting.
Okay. Youth and Rec?
Okay. Let's see. Their next meeting is Wednesday at 6:30, but in the meantime, basketball has been going seven days a week. Monday through Friday, 4:30 to 10:00, Saturday and Sunday, 8 to 6:00, and that includes travel and in-town. We also have an adult co-ed volleyball going on Sundays, 7 to 9, and everyone is invited. Three after-school programs are going, strong arts, sports, after-school sports, and STEM. And Mr. Steele just wanted to give a big kudos out to the teachers who are doing a great job supporting these after-school programs for our students. Mr. Steele is looking to find out if we can get approval to put pickleball court lines in the gym, and he's seeking permission from school committee to do that. He'd like to create two courts that the students could use throughout the day, but then hopefully open it up to some sort of pickleball league starting in March after basketball is all done, so we can go back and talk about that later. He is looking for more after-school programs and is hoping more teachers will volunteer with additional ideas. March 23rd is the tentative date for the annual Easter egg hunt for the town youth. He's also looking to start dances back up the first week of March. He's looking to split 5th and 6th grades into separate dances because of the volume of students, chaperone needs, and behaviors, so combination of things.
So they haven't been having dances?
They have not had dances as of yet because basketball is seven days a week.
Right.
So the gym is totally taken. But once basketball is done, he'd like to pick those up. And again, it's really dependent upon basketball, so if the leagues continue, then that's not going to be a possibility. Another thing he asked me to mention is that he would like us to highly consider replacing the bleachers in our capital budget as they're original to the gym, 30 to 40 years old now. There is a lot of little things that are adding up with them, and at this point, it's difficult to fix them. So I don't know what we need to do about the pickleball lines, if that's something that we need to vote on, if we need to add it as a future agenda item. I don't know what the procedure is. Or if they can just do it.
Well, if it were me, I would want to know what the proposal is, when it would be done, what if any costs there would be.
Yeah, is he trying to put, like, painter's tape down, or is he trying to?
More lines?
Yeah.
I will invite him to write a proposal for us.
And then the bleachers?
You can also come, too, right?
Yeah.
And explain it, yeah, if he wants to come and...
Yeah, he was gonna try to make it tonight, it just didn't work out.
Yeah. Because pickleball is huge right now.
It is, it's like all the reach.
So if we get the school some money, too, if we could have, like, a league after school, that could be a good fundraiser for the school.
As far as the bleachers, I, I mean, I believe it's already on the capital, so it's good to have that feedback. Um, PTO?
At the 1/10, January 10, PTO meeting, they mentioned that teachers actually donated four baskets for the mingle and jingle, so that looks appreciated. They are bringing back Square One Art, so to speak, as a fundraiser. It's just a different company, it's called Art to Remember, and that is in progress. Just as big of it's been working on the artwork behind the scenes, and then who else has been working on getting the fundraiser up and running, and then I think information for parents will be going out very shortly about that. Mr. DeSantis gave his admin thing, which I'm sure is very similar to what we'll hear Mr. DeSantis did make a great suggestion to just give the PTO a heads-up that we had frozen our budget in here, so any, like, big items that the teachers might need, that maybe the PTO could kind of, you know, earmark that and make sure that they're ready for any additional requests for teachers. For social emotional learning, December was showing empathy, and January is growth mindset. And then field trips are starting to be planned. And that president gave an update about discussing revision of bylaws, and they consulted an attorney to get more help with being non-profit and getting sort of their books in order, getting new tax ID, things like that, really kind of just trying to clean up some things that have been overlooked for some time. Is that anything?
Thank you. I don't think capital budget met. Did admin remove, the admin review meet?
We'll be meeting Thursday.
Okay. DEIB subcommittee. So, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, have we, I don't know that we've really selected our participants.
We have not.
So obviously, we haven't. Do we need to have that on next meeting's agenda in order to talk about it?
I don't think so. I think it's part of the committee, right?
Yep, it's here, so you can assess it.
Yeah. So I would say we need to volunteer to the committee. Is there anyone that would like to be on the committee?
I, I would.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would be up, too, but...
Okay. I guess we can have an alternate as well. I'll be the alternate, unless anyone else is. Okay.
I had a thought, and again, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask it, but is it possible for, because this is being focused on policy, is it possible for us to look at the current policies that would exist already around inclusion, equity, harassment, bullying, and those? I'm not categorizing what's happening, I'm just trying to paint a broad brush of the things maybe we should look at.
I think probably the best way to go about that is if the committee has recommendations for policy that are particular to DEIB, that you would then present them to the policy subcommittee for review.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, can we request all of the policies, or do you need us to go through the actual, and file them?
So the policy manual is online, and it is searchable by certain terms.
Okay.
Some of the, the ones that are most relevant will be our nondiscrimination disclosure statement, our anti-bullying policies and procedures, and Title IX and harassment are probably the three main areas that you'll find our policies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And if they meet, I guess, do you have, do they have to, they have to post it because it's, or?
If they meet as a subcommittee, it needs to be posted.
Okay. So if you have any questions about that, and pulling in more people, for instance, or, you know, I guess, maybe, you know, post the meeting, have a meeting with an agenda, you know, that, and Karen can help with that, I imagine, right? And then kind of go from there with... Any questions? Okay. All right, Ian 31, we have a meeting on?
February 15.
February 15. That's awesome. Okay, now I'll turn the time over to Mr. Bowdre for the principal's report.
All right, thank you. Just for school council, we met on the 31st.
Of January?
Yes.
Okay, thank, I guess that wouldn't be December.
And basically, at that meeting, we were just discussing the handbook revisions. Handbook continues to be our major focus, it's 45 pages long right now. We're just trying to scale it back and update it and align it with everything that's in district policy manual, so it's not, you know, overdone. So we hope to have that by April to review. Okay, so it's just a kind of big overhaul of it and kind of like some little bit over to, hopefully, April. Things that you need, unless you need it earlier than that?
I don't think so. And as you make changes, will it be like the policy where it struck out in, like, your new, okay, so it's easy to?
We're trying to, like, have, like, the existing ones where we strike through, and then we'll have, like, what we hope it will look like, where it's a bit more user-friendly.
Okay.
It connects people to the district policy manual, so they're not, like, all their names, which is the difference between, we're hopeful it's gonna be easier, more user-friendly.
Okay.
But April was our hope to get to, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Because we don't meet in June, we figure that, I don't know, we'll try and get it pulled over to go, because it's a review before, because it is kind of a big...
Sure. Yeah, if you can get it to us before our April meeting, that would be great.
And then the water update, we sent out a notification just the other day. They really, the only update is that we received the results, we're meeting on Thursday of this week with the company that tested the water, and then with the town administrator, with Jill, with Ryan, and myself, and also my class, facilities directed to review the results, and then hopefully we'll have a better plan and send a notification, families on a nice one.
Well, and the results indicated it was fixtures, right? Well, and the results indicated it was fixtures, right, and not necessarily, or there were a few fixtures, there were less that tested positive this time, right, for lead?
There were, but there's still, continues to seem like there's an issue, but.
No, there's definitely an issue, which I was.
I'm not a water expert, but.
Right.
Hopefully having the water company there will explain to us better what exactly they recommend.
What they recommend for remediation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meetings on Thursday.
Okay.
I think it's two.
Sounds right.
Okay. We're here, Thursday.
If you could update after the meeting, the school committee, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Okay, Sarah?
Thank you.
Welcome.
In your school committee packets, I know they're not packets, they're digital and online, but I'm always going to say packets, sorry. The budget summary by function was in there, just to walk you through it, there's a deficit in the indemnification line, that was due to a change in the provider for that, from when it was budgeted in FY twenty-three until it was paid in FY twenty-four. There's a deficit in the professional development line, which is tuition reimbursement, the budget for FY twenty-five takes that into consideration. There's a deficit in the tech hardware line, that's absorbed within the technology category, and there's a deficit in the special education contracted services, which is OTPT services, which I'll be looking at with Dr. Perez.
Okay.
Any questions about the FY twenty-four budget?
Okay. That's all, anything else? Thanks. All right, Ryan?
Thank you, I have two quick updates. One is a follow-up to last month's vote on the vocal survey for climate and culture that students will take. The committee voted that students in Halifax would have the opportunity to take that in grades four and five. When this was presented to some of the other school committee meetings, there were requests that, to ensure that it complies with the Union Thirty-One Silver Lake policy on surveys, which was last approved by the committee at our previous meeting on January second. So I just wanted to follow up and add that we will, that the administration of the vocal surveys in grades four and five will comply with policy ILD, that families will be notified two weeks in advance of the grade four survey, which is May eighth and ninth, and then again, a week prior, then two days prior, in case they don't want their students to take it. Same thing with the grade five survey, which is May twenty-first and May twenty-second. So Mr. Bowdre and I have communicated that the timelines can be met, so in heat that the school will keep track of the students whose families have opted them out. Again, even if family doesn't opt a student out, the student still would have opportunity not to answer the questions if they so chose, so just wanted to provide that update based on the vote of this committee, and then some subsequent discussions that occurred among the other committees, just to, and it's also technically possible that if a family opts their child out, the child won't be able to complete the survey on their device, and there's like a technical fix for that, so that it's not even offered to them. So, we'll see all the questions before, we'll comply with policy ILD, just wanted to, that's not information that I shared at the last update, so I just wanted to give everybody that information.
So just a question to clarify, so you presented that to Union Thirty-One, and they were comfortable, as long as it meets those provisions, you might?
I presented it to each of the committees, because the same people that are manager of information systems, the elementary curriculum coordinator, across the elementary's all helped to work with the teachers to set up the administration of the MCAS. The opportunity was provided for the other towns to participate, the committees did not elect to participate in the vocal survey, but as part of that discussion, there was discussion about ensuring that any students that take it would comply with policy ILD, so we did some more research to make sure that it would comply, and it's, we have the technical ability to make sure that if a family would opt their child out, that the child would not be presented with the survey.
Okay, I just, the Union Thirty-One piece was the part of it?
No problem, we just shared that opportunity with all of the other, all of the other committees in the, in the region and the district.
Okay, thank you.
Your role. Secondly, just another update on assessment, Dr. Pula and I visited the Halifax Elementary School data team on January fifth with Principal Bowdre and Assistant Principal DeSantis. We saw the grade teacher, grade three teachers work with interventionists and special educators to analyze the STAR and DIBL's data that was taken just before, in late December, and we were impressed with the teachers and interventionists' plan to work together to progress monitor student growth and to make flexible groups, so we appreciate the work that is being done at the grade levels to assess where students are and think about ways to support them as they meet the standards, so just wanted to share that update. That's all.
Great. All right, Dr. Pula?
In your online packet tonight, you'll see a proposed meeting schedule for the Halifax School Committee. It is similar to this year's schedule, when there's an evening that isn't on the customary evening, which for Halifax tends to be Monday nights, Karen has highlighted it in yellow. If you would also look at the second page, she has highlighted how those meetings would fall throughout the school year, and so this is in there for your review and possible vote this evening.
committee's calendar.
I'll second.
All right, Katie?
Yeah.
Cory?
Karen?
Jessica?
Yes. And myself is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also in your packet, you'll see a chart of K through six students attending private and parochial schools, and then also another chart for school choice, which goes back multiple years, to show data and trends with enrollment with regards to those two categories. Those were the only two categories that the committee had not been updated on yet. And then the final item is the budget update, and that I would ask Principal Bowdre to assist with, and also there will be items that I will share, that are, that Sarah will share and that Kane will share, depending upon the pieces of information for this evening. So tonight's presentation is based upon version two, you may recall in the last meeting, the school committee wanted to know what impact it would have if in fact, we worked into this budget, a number of positions that were recommended or requested, but that hadn't been included in the level services budget. So to begin with, the past versus the present, in terms of the changes for the upcoming year, pre-K is now a Silver Lake expense, now that pre-K is officially recognized as a Silver Lake program. The other special education Silver Lake positions in the elementary schools will need to become school and town employees, we believe the majority of these employees will become Kingston employees and no longer Silver Lake employees. Out-of-district special education tuitions for pre-K and secondary must be a Silver Lake expense, that is something that we uncovered this year as part of our structural change and work with DESI. Extended school year, which had been part of a revolving account, will now be part of the school budget, it's no longer funded through a grant. We explained that the special education grants will now be used for out-of-district costs instead of primarily staffing, so Halifax will still get its allocation, but it will be applied to defray the cost of out-of-district tuitions as opposed to staffing. And in most cases, special education revolving accounts will no longer be necessary, and shared cost positions will now be paid according to the original agreement percentages.
Are there possibly grants that we can get to fill that away?
There's, they, there are always grants that we can apply for, some may or may not, we may not be able to use towards staffing, and one of the problems with using a grant towards staffing is that part of the grant goes towards retirement, and in addition, once the grant goes away, so could the position, so those are some of the reasons why schools shy away from using grants in that way, but it's not as if it couldn't be done as a, as a short-term option. Next slide, please. So increases to the Halifax budget include five Paris and point five FTE, a part-time speech-language pathologist in the budget, which is no longer a Silver Lake-funded position for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus. The shared cost contracts represent a twelve thousand dollar increase for Halifax, the extended school year costs are listed there, programs and tuitions are listed separately from transportation, you can see that this is close to ninety thousand, just an extended school year. The decreases to the Halifax budget is that grant funding will now pay for out-of-district tuitions, we anticipate that we'll be able to use a hundred and seventy-eight, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars to offset out-of-district tuitions, this will offset the increased costs of incorporated the five Paris and the point five speech-language pathologist. This exact feature, figure, we think could actually increase depending upon the allocation of the two forty grant in particular, two sixty-two is actually the pre-K grant. Other impacts, Halifax will be assessed through Silver Lake for the pre-K and secondary, middle school and high school out-of-district, so although these items are being taken out of the Halifax budget, they are going to be appearing in the Silver Lake budget, and the town of Halifax is still going to be responsible for those costs. So, we mentioned that when we met last time, that we were going to discuss with DESI how circuit breaker could be used next year, and the good news is, is that circuit breaker that was, represents the submitted claims from, from past years, will get to be used in Halifax. We won't be able to apply circuit breaker in Silver Lake until FY twenty-six. So moving forward, Halifax will not be able to submit claims on behalf of pre-K or secondary students, Silver Lake will be, but for this year, Halifax will continue to be able to apply circuit breaker for, for its students, K through six. And Sarah can explain more about circuit breaker, as well as Chris, if, if you have additional questions, but that's, did I miss anything?
I think, of course I can add to it.
Yep.
For hours, if you'd like.
Thank you.
If this is clear for everybody, then we can move on.
Okay, next slide. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who's going to talk about the changes that she made in the, in the budget that is in your packet this evening, version two.
Thank you. So there were two different things that happened with the budget going from version one to version two. One is that the version one budget was actually the first real major task that I did in my employment for the Silver Lake Regional School District, I think I had worked there for, worked here for three days before I started working on the budget, and there were some slips that I had to fix. So I had to adjust the portion of the elementary curriculum coordinator's salary, and there was a longevity payment request from a teacher that came in, those two things increased the budget by four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. I added in custodial overtime for ten thousand dollars, the fuel surcharge from the first student buses, five thousand dollars, we had a, and I'm sorry, I was not reading the additional, so the fuel surcharge, I removed five thousand dollars from the budget, there was a change in out-of-district placements, so I removed thirty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for that. There is a student that whose family reached out to the district, they're moving to Halifax, the student is currently enrolled at South Shore Vocational Technical High School in Hanover, that student, if you recall, I had budgeted for more than we actually have enrolled because the vocational, out-of-district vocational has until April first to finalize their decisions, so that's absorbed by the amount that we had built into the budget. You'll notice when you go through the lines, I made a change when I made the budget back in December, I had lumped the tuition and the transportation for the out-of-district vocational all into one line, I've separated that into two lines, it didn't change the money amount. You had asked that I add in the principal's asks from our first meeting, and so that was an additional one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and then because circuit breaker will be offsetting the Halifax budget next year, I have subtracted out six hundred and five thousand dollars from the budget for a net change of five hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the version one budget to the version, version two budget.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. So, what percentage less is the overall budget then? Because we were like ten percent less last meeting, right? So.
Next, next slide.
Oh, sorry. Oh, there we go.
Slow down, Lauren.
Sorry.
So circuit breaker, six hundred and five thousand, the offset's been taken, regular day reflects a sixteen percent increase of four hundred and two thousand six hundred, which doesn't seem to have been updated.
That actually was.
Was it? Okay.
Yes.
So we're still parsing out the regular day in special education, we're just going to vote one budget, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Special education tuition and transportation is an eighty-six percent decrease of two million three hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Substitutes are at FY twenty-four level, and utilities were updated, the total budget is a sixteen percent decrease of one million four hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. With this in mind, however, please keep in mind that Silver Lake will be increasing for Halifax.
The assessment per student will be increasing, correct? That's, do you know what that is yet?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The assessment per student, how much is that increasing? Do you, is that finalized yet, or closed?
It is not finalized yet.
Ballpark?
Thursday.
I will have it Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Why is, where are the increases in the regular day budget coming from?
So if you recall, last time, we went over the items that were notable increases, Kane outlined some of the items that increased.
Okay.
But the, the biggest drivers, if you look at your, your budget representation, they'll, they'll show you the, the percent change or the percent increase, and you can see those lines there.
Okay.
So some resource reallocation, you notice some of the lines in the budget have gone down, others have gone up based on needs, there are no known retirements at this time for FY twenty-five, and Sarah noted that we have been. And Sarah noted that we have been notified of one moving into the district who will be in an out-of-district vocational placement. So two out of the five placements that we have budgeted for are... We feel pretty confident. However, we won't know the total number until April 1st. Not included in this budget, shared costs. We have an administrative review team meeting, and we have a joint school committee meeting on February 15th, where the shared costs will be updated and finalized. Potential enrollment increases also. We do our best to estimate, but, for example, kindergarten in particular can be difficult to estimate. And at this point, no reduction for technology hardware. The REAP grant has not been reduced from this budget. So Sarah has created a visual for you to see FY '24 versus FY '25 budget in Halifax, and where most of those changes or what the result is. So Sarah, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So if you look at this bar chart, on the left-hand side is FY '24, and I've divided FY '24 up into three pieces. There's the blue part, which is the regular Halifax Elementary School budget. There is the gray part, which is the students in out-of-district placements from Halifax. And then the yellow part is the circuit breaker offset, or costs that were paid by circuit breaker in the FY '24 budget. If you notice on the left-hand side, that gray portion that is formerly out-of-district placements for preschoolers and students grades seven to 12-plus, that is in gray. That's now going to be part of the Silver Lake budget next year. So if you look over at FY '25, you see that there's still the yellow piece, which is the circuit breaker. I put in an orange piece, that is the staff that are moving from Silver Lake revolving accounts into the Halifax budget. And then everything else that's blue in the budget would be Halifax Elementary School.
So the increases... Some of the increases that you're asking about are these January 2nd proposed costs that were added. So in the next slide is the summary for your review of the requests from last time, which was the special education teacher, part-time English language learner teacher. And we went over last time the need for additional supports for English language learners, a building substitute, which would be $27,000 to use the substitute line, net neutral, if it's coming directly out of the substitute line. And then the Hero Academy proposal that Principal Bowdre has some additional information for you tonight on as well. So another thing that the school committee will eventually need to decide is what capital needs are we going to request or request warrant articles for. And as we stated, we have a meeting this week with the water company. Hopefully, we'll have more information. Principal Bowdre, last time, talked about the $10,000 per bathroom to continue updating student and staff bathrooms, and then the gym bleacher replacement, which, depending upon what happens with the water testing, is something that he advocates and believes should be a priority for the committee to consider. But again, without knowing where we stand with the water issue, it's difficult to know how realistic all of these asks would be. It's just a reminder that that's something that we need to decide also, usually in March. Next item is just the review of the English language learners and then the number of students in Halifax receiving services. Next slide. And the other... The other driver of the budget, most of the budgetary increases represent staffing and payroll. So Mr. Bowdre is going to give us an update on the summer program and how he arrived at this estimate.
Thanks, Jill. So we proposed this, but there was talk about some of the specific numbers. So we thought it would be helpful to kind of break it down a little bit more. So starting, just kind of in the middle there with the logistics for the program, what we were thinking about is who we're targeting. Starting students in grades one through six. Talking about mixing classrooms, where we would have a one, two classroom, a three, four, and a five, six. It would be two weeks in August, so it would be a total of eight days. And we would aim for three hours a day, which would be nine to 12, and we'd focus on math and ELA. The criteria that we were going to use on the right-hand side here is just looking at the students that are falling within partially meeting on our STAR testing, within 10 to 15 points from partially meeting to meeting. And teacher recommendations will also be considered, and we're looking at both math and ELA scores. On the left-hand... Probably should have done it the other way, sorry. The staffing proposal, what we're looking at. So we figured three classroom teachers at the rate of pay for that time, including prep and planning, would be $4,500. Three support staff, again, for the time, prep and planning, $3,600. We would have one site coordinator for $1,800, one nurse for $1,500, and an office secretary for $1,200.
What does the site coordinator do?
That person would be responsible for just coordinating communication with families and kind of tracking like when student arrivals, student dismissal, supporting the teachers and the staff that happens in there throughout the day. It's just, in the past, when we've had these other programs, we've always had a site coordinator that can be like the go-to person during this time, and it's been a huge help. They're kind of the go-to people for all types of communication, not only for parents, but also for the teachers that are there as well.
Well, and isn't... Is Ellen here full-time in the summer?
No, she is, but she might be on vacation. It's... I'm not sure, but what we would... We've done in the past.
But if she's on vacation, she's still being paid, right?
Yes.
Right, so you need an additional office secretary, or this would be an addition to?
It wouldn't be... I mean, Ellen would be here anyways, but this, what we're looking for is somebody just for this program, for those eight days.
Could it... This might be a dumb question, but could like a parent volunteer to be that person? Or does it have to be somebody like that can... That's getting paid to do this?
I...
I know that that might not be like as... I don't know.
I think it depends on what the job description is for the site coordinator. So, you know, having a Cory and Story check only tells part of the story. Again, depending upon the skills that are necessary for the coordination, it may or may not be appropriate. And what kind of data are they going to be working with? And what kind of private information would they have access to? So I think it depends on the job description.
Is the site coordinator also the administrator on duty? So if there's any disciplinary issues, or are you going to still handle that?
I think I'm here... Brian and I are here anyways because we're year-round. But to have somebody like on-site that to go to, like Brian and I could be working on different other things during that time. We might be at admin meetings and admin retreats. And just having somebody here designated during that time and the go-to is kind of what we would... We're planning on in that case.
So the parents aren't obligated to get away if the child is invited, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so is the nurse position necessary then for that time? I'm only talking about, I mean, about how many students... What's the cap on students to the class size for this?
We were looking at a total of 60 students would be the max.
I just don't know that the nurse is necessary for that?
We need somebody just in case something happens.
Other programs like ESY and Title I, there's always that nurse there on-site in case there's any type of medical emergency, as far as I am concerned.
Happy parents.
Do you know that you would be able to staff this okay?
I hope.
Have you asked teachers?
It's the first time we've done it, so I do hope that, you know, there would be people interested. It's... You know, a lot of teachers are actually... August 1st, you'd be surprised how many staff are here and ready to go and want to get their classrooms ready. But I think from all the teachers that I know in this building, they would love to, you know, help their students out.
Well, I'm sure of that. I'm just saying, you know... I don't know, I just... I worry about people bringing in their kids. I worry about, you know, it seems so very ambitious, like for a first time of a go of it. And I would sort of... Can I ask... Well, I can ask the teachers too, right? I mean, thoughts? I'm not meaning to put you on the spot. What? What? You don't think staffing would be a problem? Okay. Well, then I'm... No, I mean, I'm just honestly wondering, because, you know...
We have some air conditioners, right? Can we just like do it in the air-conditioned rooms? There's only three classrooms. Put them in the air-conditioned rooms.
These portable ones.
I'll bring them in.
But you're on camera, though, so I need somebody to really work.
I love the idea, so I'm being honest.
So is the... I don't know how you debate up the time in front of the students versus the prep time. So does it correlate with their contractual rate of pay for the $4,500 and the $3,600? So how's that mapped out?
That's kind of what we were working off of, was the rate of pay.
I'd say that needs to be clearly determined. Like, we need to make sure we're honoring their contract and making sure that whatever we're paying them correlates with the hours they're putting in.
Right.
Rather than... It looks almost like salary-based at this point, you know, to sort of, here you're getting paid this $4,500. I mean, I guess that's what we want to agree to do, but I think that we just need to be careful about what we're doing for rate of pay and what their contract rate of pay.
I'd have to kind of, you know, do a little bit of research on that because I know that contractual rate of pay, because that's for curriculum work. And then I know ESY is paid differently, and I know Title I is paid differently. So we were kind of like in that ballpark of what it is, so I'd have to defer to like... Get a definitive answer, but it's definitely more than the contractual pay.
Unless we can just approve this separately, but I don't know if that passes up violating their contract with that. If we could make this its own sort of rate of pay for this program, I guess, would that allow us to do that? Don't worry about that, do you?
I don't know.
Jill?
Do you know, like, so could we create a different rate of pay for this? Is it the same as their regular contractual rate of pay? That's my concern. Or do we have to make sure it's exactly aligned with their contractual rate of pay?
Generally speaking, we align it with the contract. Sometimes there are grants, for example. This is our program. So our program should be aligned with whatever expectations there on the contract. Grants, however, there may be caps, or there may be expectations that are not within our authority to change.
So the three classroom teachers and the three support staff could change? Like, the estimated dollar value that would change depending on who is filling those roles?
Well, in the past, we use the professional development rate. Does that sound familiar, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we follow the... Whatever the hourly rate is in the contract, I'm looking in the Halifax one right now. I would want to consult with our legal counsel. I do think that programs that run over the summer, if there were a mutual agreement between the associations and the committee, there could be a different rate. But in terms of our historical past practices, it's always been to tie any rate outside of contractual duties with what's ever listed in the contract.
So if you could tie that number to what their rate is? And even, I mean, it could still be that number, but say, you know, it's three hours time on learning, but then you'd have to say how much prep time there is to get to the $4,500.
Break that down for me, absolutely.
Based on their rate, their contractual rate. And I think I'm fine with using their curriculum workshop hours. You know, that we can just use that same term and the same rate for a different purpose for this. And then maybe we should think about...
How long is the day, too?
Yeah, what is...
How long is the day, yeah?
It would just be nine to 12 for students.
Nine to 12? Because then like the secretary's making $150 a day for three hours. You know, like, I'm... You know? I just... If they're only there for eight days, you know, I feel like... I just want to make sure everything like really ties up well and we're not...
She needs to be there, or she, he, whoever, would need to be there, though, probably 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after.
I know.
So that's four hours.
It seems a lot more than what they... I don't know, I just...
That number's going up with what other programs where they've had nurses. But that's where I was... And same thing with like the rate of pay. It's... The curriculum work is a certain dollar amount, but this isn't curriculum work. And then I know ESY teachers get paid a certain amount, and then Title I teachers get paid a different amount. So we were trying to collaborate with all those different rates of pay, but I don't know, like Dave said, it's...
I mean, based on the hours you have and the figure you have, I think we're in the ballpark for sure.
I'm just concerned about the blues, you know, that we just saw. You know, this is so much higher, and, you know, we want to be able to provide as much opportunity as we can for students, but it's just, you know, we have to make sure we're not... I don't know, I just want to make sure we're being as lean as we can on things.
You know, we live in a town that likes to look at all the line items. So we need to make sure that the town is on board with any of this type of new spending. And then assume that you lean for it's the rising grade one and rising grade six, and what if kids leaving here going to a middle school, right?
I love the idea, from being honest.
Yeah, I agree. I like the idea of possibly giving a student the ability to boost their self-esteem enough so that when it comes to the beginning of the school year, they're performing that much stronger and then keeping that momentum through the school year. We may be able to close in a gap that, you know, very easily can be closed in that amount of time, too.
We're hopeful. I mean, we haven't done it before, but I think it's using the data that we have. We thought that, you know, this might be an opportunity for us to try it out.
Have the other elementary schools done this?
No.
No?
So you said this isn't new, but have there been other programs similar in the summer that were those under like Title I grants or other?
So, well, we have ESY for one, and then we've had Title I summer programs. And then we had an accelerated program last year that would, I think, spend a good Title I.
There were accelerated Learning Academy grants through DESI two years ago that the schools took advantage of.
So, and that, I mean, I have a son who, when he was going from kindergarten to first grade, within a program, I think it was four weeks for reading, and it helped a lot.
Yeah.
It helped a lot. So I, I mean, I see the value. Do you have any sense, based on past enrollment, what, like, what have other summer-type programs? What's the enrollment like? If you're shooting for 6D, you know, based on other summer programs, what have you seen for the number of students that are tagged?
I actually don't have good numbers because we haven't housed anything here for quite some time. Just based upon the fact that we've had... We had building renovations for a number of years. There is very limited air conditioning in here, so, and you know, ESY was always either in Clinton or in Kingston.
Okay.
Same with Title I. What we would do is we did Title I for a little bit, but... And we... It was only targeted for like students in kindergarten and first grade, I believe, and maybe even second grade. But we did have a... We did have decent attendance, but this is...
It's a tough sell sometimes to the students. I know my son is kind of like, I'm going.
I don't want to go to school in the summer, yeah.
Well, that's why we were trying, like, three hours might be enough in the summertime before they get back into the group of school.
Two weeks is not unbearable.
Right. And that's, I don't know if it's going to be successful, I really don't.
But we'll never know unless we try it.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, I can definitely see the value. I mean, my family definitely benefited from having a summer program, so, yeah.
I mean, if it goes through, and I could be here in September saying it was a flop. I don't know, but I hope that it doesn't, I hope that it will be successful if it does go through, but I guess we won't know unless we give a shot.
I like that you're using STAR because it will, the reports in STAR can show you exactly where those gaps are. And so you know exactly where you need to target with those students.
So I would, I lo-, I do love all of it, except for I just need the, I need the salaries to be more aligned and also more descriptive. So I'm just not sure what the site coordinator would do above and beyond what the secretary would do. And then, so the site, so, and what are the hours, right? So we're saying it's 24 hours, basically, of a program. So the site coordinator is getting $75 an hour. And then the teachers and the nurse are getting 62. And then the secretary and the support staff are getting 50. And I feel that the ones in the room teaching the students need that additional support and time to prep for doing that work because, you know, I don't know if that's how you got the numbers because it does work, the nurse and the teachers are in the same, kind of work for the contraction, for their contract. So I guess that's good. And the secretary, the secretary staff and the support staff are the same. So they're both 50, and then the nurse and the teachers are both 62, and then the coordinator is 75. But I guess that's what's not clear to me because it just says nine to 12. But I don't think that the teachers should just get paid for that time they're in front of students. And if they're getting paid for more time, then that's not reflected in the monetary value that you put there. So I think that needs to be cleaned up, if I'm sure at all.
Can I ask a question about the site coordinator? So in the past, who fills that role, like from a staff perspective? Is it another teacher, or is it?
We had, the most recent one was a teacher. The year before that, I think it was Brian, when he, his contract was different at one point. I don't know, maybe Melissa Farrell might have been a coordinator, the district coordinator came in and kind of went around all the schools a little bit. But would be, not me and not Brian, I guess, as we're required to be here anyways. Our hopes would be that it would be one of our staff numbers. But I could definitely break down all the numbers for you.
Yeah, I think the most important is again, for the, everybody else is here nine to 12, but the teachers aren't just nine to 12, so. And if you do the breakdown, then it doesn't seem that that's been compensated for. So however, however you want to do that, if you want to increase the classroom teacher amount or decrease the others, or however you want to work it, obviously is up to you. But I think that needs to be included, and I think that the expectations for those roles, especially the, the time spent in the building for those roles should be really needed, too.
I would agree. I think that we also need to put in there a role it's going to be to stay with a child that's not been picked up, that the site coordinator or the teacher. We want to give leadership if there's a child still in the building. It happens all the time where parents are running late. So I just think we need to have a provision in place that if a teacher's or the coordinator's expected to stay beyond the regular hourly, the regular day.
In the past, it's been the coordinator.
Do we need a coordinator and a secretary? Is that a stupid question to ask? I just, okay. Like, I don't, like, I don't know, they're, they're similar to me, ones, I just-
I think that's why it's important that we see what the responsibilities-
Yeah, I would need that laid out because I just don't know, yeah. Especially since it's only three hours, so it's like, can't the secretary coordinate? In my mind, you know?
And I, I don't know, maybe go back to your teachers, too. I'm not sure that, I mean, I'm sure they would like a support staff, but if we're getting this off the ground and if we're asking for more money for our budget, if it's class size of less than 20, and it's on, you know, three-hour day in total, and there has to be some will of the child to want to go, right? So, you know, like, so it's not like regular school that, you know, you absolutely have to be there. It's like, there's definitely interest there, and there's support from the parent to have the child attend. I'm not sure, maybe they definitely absolutely want a support staff in each room, but maybe, maybe they could do without. And again, that's where we could kind of just shave some, some of the cost this year. See how it goes, and then if next year it's like, man, I really needed support, then we could add that back in.
Or I really needed a coordinator.
Or the places of record.
I just don't know what the coordinator and the sec-, like, that's why, I just need to see, like, what is the coordinator going to do, and what is the secret, secret? Like, the teacher is obvious, the nurse is obvious, and the support staff is obvious. I just don't know, like, those need to be divided at what they are.
I was just going, typical ESY and Title, they have coordinators, and, you know, there's office staff that are there, so that's where I was going.
Yeah.
I'll definitely, I'll lay it out what their expectations are, and then I'll put that into, you know, the cost as well, rate of pay.
And I don't, I just don't, I taught Silver Lake Night School and Summer School for 100 years, and I don't know, maybe there wasn't a nurse there all the time, but I just don't remember that, is that a definite need, the nurse having to be there? You know?
For some students, it's a necessity.
Yeah. So can we assess that and see if it's a necessity, and then decide if we need the nurse?
Well, we also need to be able to respond to emergencies that occur on scene.
But do we do that, so does Silver Lake Summer School and High School have a nurse now? I mean, maybe they did when I taught there, I taught it for years, but I just never, they do. They always have their nurse for Summer School.
Especially with all the allergies now and everything, too, you gotta have somebody that can administer an EpiPen. Or, I mean, I have three small boys, so I know what happens, like, instantly. ER visits, like, real quick, so. And the oldest is seven. Only the beginning.
So I'll put more information together for next meeting, is that?
Yep. Thank you.
So, um-
Oh, thanks, did I go bad, Jill?
No, this is good. Sarah has calculated for us, because I think the big question is, how much was taken out of the Halifax budget and is going over to Silver Lake? $2,381,453 in out-of-district tuition and transportation. Next item? So at this point, we're just looking for your feedback and any additional information that you'd like for us to provide for you at the next meeting. Our next meeting will be in March, and hopefully at that time, well, we know at that time, the assessments will be available to us, and we'll need to make some decisions.
Do we think that we're going to have the cost per remediation of the water before next meeting?
Not necessarily. What we may have is the next steps and the anticipated costs of next steps.
So do we need to, that would be something that's separate from our budget to go to town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Just want to make sure.
As far as the asks, are they in order of priorities already? I mean, that was my understanding, because, you know, just to, because looking at the total budget overall. So-
Yes, they were.
Okay.
It might be a little bit of a toggle between the ESL teacher and the special ed teacher. It might also be dependent on whether you ask.
Well, in the building substitute, we already decided was kind, you know, is a cost, so.
Right.
But, okay. Just in case, I know, I mean, we'll have to see how everything shakes out with the assessment and a lot of moving parts.
So can I ask you a question to wrap up? The next step is the engagement with the community stakeholders. So are we trying to publish that this was a public budget hearing was happening, telling a ton of folks looking? In the past, how have school committees communicated to the community?
So when I talk about engagement with stakeholders, typically, we, school committee meets with the Board of Selectmen and/or the Finance Committee. We get that invite from the town. Sarah and I have an upcoming meeting with the town administrator, so we hope to have more information after that meeting in terms of what committees would like to meet with members of the school committee and with us. And we try to organize and schedule a meeting once we know the, typically occurs after the assessments because it's very difficult to give you a full budget picture until that has been completed. So that's one way.
And those are public meetings, but anyone in town can attend, so.
In addition, we post the, we post the versions of the budget. We post these presentations on our website. We have the budget hearing. You're doing everything that all of the other school committees do.
Do the other school committees have more people show up to them at their meetings?
Sometimes, depends on what the issue may be. We'll have a better understanding of, I think, Thursday night, depending upon how much interest the Silver Lake assessments and budget hearing generate.
I think there's just so much kind of shifting this season that it would be helpful if people in the community were aware. I mean, we just had this special meeting, so there should be some awareness that things are going to move around. But, you know.
One of the things that we did with the regionalization is that we had a frequently asked questions flyer that went out with, to the community before the vote so that they had a sense of what was included. And we also provided to the community the entire regional agreement. So when it comes time for the town vote, the community members have another opportunity to review information that perhaps they didn't get a chance to participate in the meeting or view it online. But we can speak with the town administrator to see what kinds of information would be helpful for the public.
Thank you. Sarah, so just coming from Hanover, the South Shore vote, are they staying in South Shore because of their previous attendance there or because they offer a program that we do not?
They offer a program that we do not.
Any other questions? Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right. So if someone wants, oh, wait, sorry. Dates to remember first, there's a joint meeting February 15th. Winter vacation is February 19th through 23rd. Our next school committee meeting is March 4th, and there's an in-service for teachers on March 5th where there's no school. If someone would like to make a motion to go into executive session not to return to regular session and read this paragraph, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and not return to our regular session per MGL C30A Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining contract facilitation, Halifax paraprofessionals, administrative assistant, principal, and school committee reporting secretary. An executive session pursuant to MGL C3A S21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, approval of executive session minutes of January 2nd, 2024.
Second. All right, roll call, Katie?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming.